President, we will lead us to the final check which can be in more will lead us to the.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, all. Lift our heads and pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we come before you this evening, Lord, and we lift up your name and we ask you, Lord, to lead and guide this meeting tonight. Lord, thank you for the opportunity to be a part of the community that still looks to you in guiding our affairs. Lord, it says in First Timothy, chapter 2, "To pray for all those who are in authority that we might lead quiet and peaceful lives." And so together, Lord, we lift up those in decision-making authority tonight. Help them through their business, Lord, help them through their agenda. And we thank you for our merit, our counsel, and its members, Lord, that are here to serve the community. Thank you for this community, Holbrook, Lord, and that you will help there just to be clarity of mind and a flow in this meeting tonight to make progress and to see things done according to your will. And so, Lord, we look to you tonight to guide us and lead us in our meeting. And we thank you and praise you for the opportunity to put you first. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Our four public announcements and presentations, we have financial update by local county.
Councilmembers, I appreciate the time to be here. My name is Brian Lightman, Assistant County Manager. Chairman, or Supervisor Whiting wanted to be here, but unfortunately he had a family emergency combined with the plumbing emergency at home. And so wish him the best as he tries to clean up from that. So I appreciate the time to be here, the entire region here in Marcus, Arizona. Local hindrances into some tough times, and we changing energy policy, just changing economics. And I'd like to introduce our interim finance director, Paige Peterson, who is going to walk us through what the county is facing, what the decisions and similar decisions are making already and facing. So would you please want to take your time on that?
Thank you, Brian. Thank you for allowing us to come speak to you today about the financial challenges that we're facing step better. What we're facing in Navajo County and really in our region is the entire loss of the industry. The pending closure of the remaining three units of the Choytacara in Mesa City will result in a property tax loss of $1 million. When they closed unit two in October of 2015, that resulted in the loss of $30 million in property valuation, which was a $200,000 loss to our general fund. So the remaining three units will be another $1 million loss. We're also facing the loss of the Cananta Mine. Back in January, the Navajo Generating Station announced their closing, which they're located in Copanino County, but their coal supplier is located in Cananta. And Cananta Mine's only customer, Navajo Generating Station. And she has pulled the ultimately the Cananta Mine loss. Which will be a $200,000 loss to our property tax. It's also a loss of $100 million in payroll with air income. So on top of the property tax loss, we'll also see significant loss to our sales tax. Unfortunately, we're not able to talk about any specific taxpayer. We signed nondisclosure agreements with the Department of Revenue. So we can't specifically get numbers of what our sales tax loss is going to be. However, we can tell you that it's going to be a greater loss than the property tax level, so that's greater than $1 million. And this will also trigger a loss in our state share sales tax because we have such a decrease in your county excise tax. Your state share formula is based on sales. When you see a big decrease in county sales tax, it has a direct impact on our state share sales tax. This year already, our sales tax was down $130,000, although we need to call it great. In summary, a lot of the $2 million property tax loss, sales tax loss. Another challenge, pretty big challenge we're facing is the elected officials retirement plan. They set the rate, they kept the rate at 25% several years ago, and now they've realized that that plan is significantly underfunded. So they're going to more than double our base over a 100% increase to $10, it comes out to $558,000 increase. So that increase will start to roll in this year, as well as just the cost of doing business is increasing. Today, we asked the board supervisors to approve our Microsoft renewal, which is about a $63,000 increase over last year. You all know about the voter approval and on wage, that could impact that and just health insurance, just because the price of healthcare is way up. So this situation, if you're unique to Navajo County in our region, the Navajo Generating Station in the Porpona area, they've announced they're closing two of their generators, and recently they announced they might have a total shutdown for five years. So it's definitely not unique to us. We're seeing this really all over the country. So what has changed over the past two years is we have not been able to invest in our capital equipment. Right now, our vehicle fleet average is between 11 and 13 years old. Our heavy equipment average is about 19 years old. And we haven't been able to regularly invest in our IT infrastructure. We have several servers that are running under, that are no longer under warranty. Because our IT department even has to look at how many parts for those items. So we've had a 75% reduction in capital spending over the last several years. We've had a 12% reduction in staffing since the recession, and we've seen a 254% increase in public safety retirement. I'm sure you're probably aware of what public safety retirement rates did years ago. You probably faced the same increases. And we've seen a 40% increase in healthcare costs. We also haven't been able to do anything for our employees besides a 2% base wage increase in 2014. We've also had to increase the healthcare cost sharing with our staff. So ultimately, our employees' net pay has decreased over the years. Another problem where we've faced since the recession is the state cost shift. When the state needed to balance their budget when the recession hit, they started passing several clauses on the state. So far, we've incurred $8.8 million. About half of that is general fund and the other half is part of the HALEs or fund. This year, we're projecting to fly about $1.3 million to house federal inmates. It's a great funding source for us, however, it's not a guaranteed revenue source. And at any time, those inmates could go away, which would mean a $1.3 million loss to us. The State Supreme Court also mandated court security for all of the courts, for all of the justice courts. So that's also an increase for the safety equipment and the personnel. So even though we have seen some growth since 2008, it quickly goes away with all these state cost shifts to the counties. And to put that in perspective, having that of the general fund, that's about what it costs every year to run the jail. So it's very significant. This pie here represents our general fund expenditures. As you can see, the blue is salaries and employee-related expenses. So 67% of our general fund is people, it's employees. The next largest chunk is state function, that orange piece. The state requires that we pay a significant portion of access and the Arizona long-term care is the senior care, as well as restoration of competency. Anytime the judge deems somebody not competent to stand trial, we have to pay for that rehabilitation. We also have to pay for the sexually libbing offenders that are sentenced in our county that are housed in state hospital. So we have no control over anything in that orange box, older, the state requires that we pay. Next is professional services. That makes up the election poll workers, illegal defense, our informational systems and software, our software maintenance agreements. We also have to provide medical for the inmates in the jail. We're responsible for their medical treatment while they're incarcerated. Operating expenses are our general liability, utilities, telephone, compared to me, 5% is supplies, fuel, office supplies, food supplies in the jail, and then a teeny little slice, the 2% of what we spend on capital. So very little. It's really come down to just emergency purchases and needs, and some people need a break and it can all be fixed. And then 1% is travel. So the idea of this exercise is to show that even if we stop spending, stop spending money on all supplies, travel, capital, it still won't make up for the loss that we're seeing. So it's not hard to tell that when you have to make such significant cuts, that it has to be taken from that little piece of the pie. So the current actions that we're taking is we asked the board on March 28th meeting if they would discontinue the child support services that are provided here locally. It's actually the responsibility of the State Attorney General. But it was something that we wanted to be able to provide locally that it was $200,000 match when we were doing that. Unfortunately, it's just not something we can afford anymore. And this isn't a new thing either. Only Kila, Navajo County are the two counties left that are still providing child support locally. This will impact eight employees. We also asked the board on March 28th if they would consider closing the juvenile detention facility. It has an annual cost of $1.2 million. It's actually slightly more than that because the sheriff's budget provides their meals and medical. And then Apache County, we have a contract with them. They closed their juvenile about a year and a half ago. They pay us $90,000 a year, which is double the minimum cost. But our better state recount in juvenile is 7.1 kids per day. It's a 40-foot facility. Apache County makes up 18% of that. And we do have an agreement with BIA. Can only house a BIA juvenile, which makes up 3% of the population. But it just got to where we can't afford this, and we're not able to provide the services. These kids will need counseling and rehabilitation that could be very beneficial for them. The board did approve closing the facility since June 30th. So that will impact 16 full-time, seven part-time, and the teachers that are at the school. This isn't a unique precedent either. Currently, four counties in Arizona utilize contract agreements to house juveniles. Kila County contracts with them now. Apache County currently contracts with us, so they'll need to look into another agreement. Greenleaf contracts with Grant, and La Paz also contracts out. The two options that we're looking at right now is either Grant or coming out there, schedule tours with both of us, and just to see what their facilities offer and council services that they offer. There could be a potential partnership for transporting these juveniles because of Apache County. The intake will still be done at the county complex and will take care of the transportation. But this should be an annual savings of $600,000. The next steps is we're always looking to expand our local partnerships. I believe the county manager, Mr. James, met with Randy at the Chinese to discuss the people, to think they have going on. We'll continue to work with elected officials and department directors to develop production proposals. And as they do that, we'll take those proposals to the board of committee. We're trying to get the word out as best we can through social media, YouTube, Facebook, Twitter. County managers and everybody to complete through press releases, as well as telling to you guys and just letting to financial challenges.
I just want to say it's an excellent presentation. I wish it was better news.
Next item we'll attend is the proclamation of child prevention in four months.
It's up to you. Yes.
So basically, what we did is hold up his mouth under the Apache Navajo County child abuse prevention. Under by the state areas. It's based on the community of the county area there. Representative for Navajo Apache County. Today, we had a proclamation done by Navajo County, and we also did some filming of some of the council members that are over. We did the taping of a trailer that's going to go out to all the movie theaters to prevent child abuse. Through out the state Arizona. So it's the same message for everybody, so that you don't have one message from one area and then another message in another area. Program's going to be piloted through the movie theaters throughout the state Arizona. So anybody who goes to a movie, they'll be able to see probably some lucky people, maybe a club as well as people from other areas. This year, Holbrook could add it to the list. Previous years, with the exception of Holbrook, three point of this. I understand the media doesn't actually look at that much from my hands. Make a lot of space. This was a competition that was dealt with all the community board supervisors in both counties, as well as every single city council, as well as every town council. Has agreed to let the children be able to child abuse prevention areas, where most of children can have a happy life.
So we have the proclamation for the, to make April, the child abuse proclamation goes up. All those in favor of this proclamation?
Wait, we don't have the motion in a second.
Next item we'll attend is presentation by the Route 66 laws.
Good evening. My name is Cassandra. My name is Jamie. And we're members of the Route 66 laws and are here as ambassadors for the city of Holbrook. Thank you for letting us come before you today with this opportunity to invite you to hold a Route 66 festival event in your car show that will take place on Friday and Saturday, June 9th and 10th. This is our fourth annual event, and each year it continues to grow, with this year to feature more classic cars, great food, and entertainment than ever before. This two-day event will start off Friday with a poker round, then a burnout contest, followed by live music by Triple Flank, and a late-night neon pink dance party, Color the Route. On Saturday, the cars will ride the streets of Hoppy Drive as live music takes the stage. Food vendors open their doors, and the activities begin. As part of this special weekend, the Petri Five Forest will be offering the Relics Tour on Friday. This event is exclusive to Holbrook's Route 66 Festival, where visitors can take a guided tour on the last portion of Route 66 and visit parts that are rarely seen. We'd also like to invite you to take part in the Fattee Chasse Challenge. We are presenting a challenge to each of the municipalities in Navajo County to show up on Saturday morning in their hottest drive and coolest wheel. Each community's representative will be invited to our VIP tent, and the ride they came in will be entered into a People's Choice Award selection. Spend the day checking out the classic cars as Elvis takes the stage. You can also get your photo taken with the actual Herbie the Little Bug featured in the film, Herbie Goes to Mordecai. Enjoy our Native American arts market and activities scheduled throughout the day. The city of Holbrook welcomes you and hopes you can attend. The Facebook meeting is on your invitation that details the events that will take place, and we look forward to seeing you there. Any questions?
How many Route 66 laws are there?
There's about eight of us, but two minutes to. And the disclaimer, they've been, they have already gone to Pintop Lakeside and did the same presentation. I was at the board of supervisors this morning. It'll be getting winds low in a couple of weeks, and we're hitting the other one. So we are making this challenge to all the municipalities. We want to make sure Holbrook is well represented. Mayor Tyler put his car in last year, but if you want to borrow my Ford Focus, you're welcome. Thank you.
At this time, we'll welcome public comment on Brian's testimony agenda. And there's a five-minute time limit. Okay, first one's Mr. Bill Peppers.
Thank you, Acting Mayor Peterson, and member of the council. It's a pleasure to be here. First, let me, if you didn't already know it, I don't live in the city. So I want to get that up in front of you first. I'm here to address your search for a city manager. And to tell you that I don't know Randy that well, but I have had one dealing with him in terms of the city several years ago. And at every step, he was very professional and based on your budget and based on what you heard from the county. I can only hope that you would consider postponing any major decision about going out across the country to hire somebody. As I understand it, your city manager serves the role of the council for the most part, may have a short-term contract. I think that in the interim here, you can tell the budgets across the country and this community improve. I would suggest that you keep Randy. I've been in positions like you are, and we've hired different people. And just like with anything, some have worked out very well and some have not. So what you're looking at now is possibly a search for the unknown compared to what you do know. And from what I've seen of Randy and the way the city's going to run and handle it, if I were in your position, I'd put my confidence in you. I realize that I don't have all the information that you have from meetings or your closed sessions. But from what I've read, I know that there's a discussion and a difference of opinion. And that's what you're there for. That can happen. But please, think carefully and think, you know, you don't have to make a decision about this right now. And if you've got a good thing, hang on. Well, thank you. My time's up, I bet.
Oh, no, I think you look good. Good evening, Vice Mayor. Good evening, former Mayor Peterson. Greetings, City Council and folks down here. I too would like to speak upon the city manager position. I have gone through numerous situations with the city manager in the past. I have tried both finding one outside, which we did not do so well. And I accept the fact that I made a mistake on that one. I do not wish to see the city council repeat that same mistake. C.O.R. Dad used to say, "If we can't learn from the past, you're doomed to repeat it." We do have a city manager, an interim city manager, that seems to know his job, has the knowledge, has the loyalty to Holbrook. A county situation is not going to leave this town. And whether you choose Randy or someone else, that will be your choice. But I highly recommend him in knowing him for so many years. I think you will have no more than a 25% chance of finding anybody in the search outside of Holbrook, whether it's in the state and especially if it's across the country. With somebody who understands our town and a town like ours. It's very small. We all know one another. We have to speak, but we can't have the, we can't solve them. And I do hope that you will reconsider and table this particular matter. That is to say, the choosing of an outfit outside of Holbrook to find a city manager. Either table it or just knock it down and look.
I'm Holbrook, Spain. Been here a long time. Seen all the things. And I have yet to see a really successful outside of what we've gone in to serve as our city manager. I don't think we can do any better than Randy. I think he's done a great job. And he has taken on so much. I'm surprised he would even consider it. But I would ask the city, please, don't go outside. Don't spend a lot of money on the search, delay. Let's work with what we have. We'll kind of get on Holbrook after this. We can have a whole county, and there's problems financially. I don't feel quite so bad. I think we've done quite well. We have to be realistic. With the things that we don't have, probably can't have, work with that. We have so many things going for us. We need to count our blessings. We still have the highway, the interstate. We do have the railroad. We are still a hub to quite a degree, and we're far more so. My last few trips from the valley or even showboat up here, I am amazed over the traffic that we have coming into Holbrook to get onto the interstate. I think there are a lot of things here that we can work on and improve. I would like to see Holbrook look more attractive. We have lots of room for cleaning up Holbrook and fixing it. We have never fully developed the partnership that we should have with the Petri Five Forest and Petri Distant. That is a big attraction. And I look at a map and I see Winslow, and then I see the Petri Five Forest, nothing of Holbrook. We have a lot of things that we could, small things that we could do to improve Holbrook. Make it a good place. If somebody comes here and looks at Holbrook, we want to have positive. Leave positive pressure and want to settle here. So that's all I have to say. I would just, I'd like the city to keep Randy solid as our city manager. I would just, I'd like us to keep Randy solid as our city manager for a while. And let him get his job done. And if we need, it sounds like we're looking more for, uh, that ladies' point of view of justice and with connections and travel and all those things, it brings up the Holbrook to be wonderful. So let's work with what we have, do the best we can. We can do better. We also could get busy and support some of the Holbrook. We have things that are put on and nobody goes to them. And then we complain there's nothing to do, but that's not so. And we can also, if our local clubs, the Elks, the Eastern Star, so many of the organizations, that's good. That's all I have to say.
I'm fixed on agenda. There's a consent agenda. Most time, if there's a motion to approve anything for consent agenda. Not, uh, have a motion to approve consent. So maybe a motion to approve consent. All in favor?
Aye.
Close. Um, so we have current events. Do you have any comments on the current events?
I like what you've all said and how they're going about promoting our car show, which I thought was a statement about because I'm the guy that goes out and promotes it, but I think it's one of the best things that's happened to Holbrook in a long time. So I'm going to get better. And these girls have done a good job.
Hey, man, one item of old business, which was a vendor, the, uh...
Oh, wait.
Oh, that's right, that's right. Mayor, wait.
Thank you, Council. Um, to start off right off, with what she was talking about, with working with the Petri-Fried Forest, Kathleen has been working with them, and we are, uh, they're going to start getting volunteers together, and we're going to do guided tours on Saturdays and Sundays starting Memorial Day weekend at our Petri-Fried Park. So, and what is it?
Memorial Day through Wednesday.
Through Labor Day. So Memorial Day through Labor Day, every Saturday and Sunday, we will have a volunteer out there with, with Petri-Fried Forest to do the tours of our Petri-Fried. So I think that's a big benefit. Kathleen's been working with the Petri-Fried Forest, I would say, very well, because we've been promoting, and they've let us do the, uh, homework marathon out there on Forest too. So we, we really do appreciate that, working with the Petri-Fried Forest and trying to get some things done. Um, I'm working on scheduling with AOT on the Hoppy Drainage Issue. They've got some ideas, engineered ideas, and they're working on grates. I think the, the grates got manufactured, so I just need to work on scheduling some time when the street crews are meet up up there with them. For the last meeting, our Economic Development Committee will start April 20th at 6:00 PM here at City Hall, and we will start going through the ideas on economic development. We finished the levee shade and finished the bathrooms up in Waziski. We're just working on sewer right now, so, um, that should be done hopefully tomorrow or early Thursday. We started working on the dock mark up on top of the hill. We pulled 70 feet of curb today and set another 50 feet of curb for the marge. So, um, I'm still going to try to get that project done for the summer. We started, um, I designed, I met with John Guttery and Michael Young, and we started designing the soccer field, and we've been talking about expanding back behind the pool. So we designed that, came up with the parts list, and, uh, we're setting that up to bid. So hopefully, um, those will start coming, um, back this week, and we've already started groundwork on that. Next week, and a little bit this week, we're bouncing back and forth between the pool and the splash pad. Um, we're making a couple of little changes on the splash pad, and then while the weather is good, we're going to crack seal all the cracks on the splash pad before we open it up. We'll, uh, let that seal and dry it. Uh, and then, um, we, our airport, our runway lights at the airport went out. I got some bids for it. It's going to cost us almost $12,000 to do it. So, um, what I am doing now is I'm working on, um, existing airport grant that we have. Um, I'm trying to work that into the grant now to get that paid for. So we may be coming back to you for amendment on that. Hopefully, that grant will pay for that, because I don't know where that money is going. But as of right now, we have no lesson. I have a note in on that for the runway lights through May. So until I get some more information on the, uh, on that transformer, that will be in effect. And Dee, uh, Dois, and Steve Rutherford have been coming in every, Steve has been coming in from the golf course every Wednesday, and we are spraying, starting to spray weeds. And Steve is certified for weeds, and then Deevee has worked him up a new one. So we're trying to get as many weeds as we can as they're sprouting up. And that, that's all it helps.
Okay. An extra session for class, Dr. Peterson. Okay, then we do have one, I have to move through this, so audience, so the subject should be reoperating with easement, and they are, they share this group of people who have access. This is the second meeting. It's ready for discussion.
Councilman Peterson, if you guys have any questions, uh, I'm referring this to Sharon. She's been working on it. And, uh, I don't, I don't know. It's been amended.
The easement has not been amended. They responded back to me and wanted to know if the council would be willing to add a provision that the city could move the easement at any time should the city decide to redo that area or move the driveways, as long as the parcel would still have access was required by the city for this type of property. I didn't spend money on the attorney to find out and bring it to you before I did pursue I did give them two options, um, either the east side of the property, right up the property line, or to go up Wilderman. No, it's Wilderman, I think. Wilderman Street to where it's even with Narba, and then go across there.
The backside.
The backside of the property.
The way it goes to Swell Farms, and anyway it goes, follows our property line and gets it to the high school.
But his response to me was to add a provision, and I'm, an attorney would have to, even if their attorney drew it up, I'll have to spend money to have Marlene to review that. So before I did any of that, I wanted you guys to decide what you want me to do. Did you read it by heading? I missed the part.
Yeah. What you're saying is essentially the same things we saw last...
Yes, it's exactly the same.
With the provision that we could change that. Then has it been amended?
No, I haven't done anything. I'm asking what you want to do.
If you guys want to add that provision...
Wade was very specific.
If you guys want us to add that provision that we can change it, if we develop it up there, then we'll have to, we'll have to, uh, write something up and have, uh, our attorneys.
Their attorney asked if it was an option to keep the easement at its proposed location, but add a provision that the city could move the easement at any time should the city decide to redo that area.
If we have provision in there, if we set where it is now, what we want it, if we have a provision in the contracts of where I've seen it from Luda, call and make sure the pass is moved up to Luda.
It's almost just covering us. If, if it's okay to do it, I wouldn't be there.
That's our real attorney. I'm not a real attorney, but I want to get an opinion about it. I don't know whether people are going to...
Well, I'm not going to drop the documents because I'm not a new attorney either. And you'd asked about a reversionary clause on that property?
Always we have that.
Yes, and we do not. We did not even enter into an agreement with them. We gave it to them by quitclaim in 2008. So, I guess we give them a hunk of land out there that, because they have access to it.
This organization would be in hurry to end this, huh?
Apparently not, because he waited till after the agenda was done to send me an email with his option.
But in my understanding, the road is already there. Basically, really...
It's the campus. It's the old campus parking lot.
I'm going to put the easement down where you suggested, on the south side or down the east side. And when we're done, they have legal access, they can drive through the campus.
Well, let me, uh, read the ordinance ahead in. I'll look over here.
An ordinance of mayor and council of the city of Holbrook, Arizona, authorizing an easement from the city of Holbrook to Narba Institute Incorporated for the purpose of access, namely the property more fully described in Exhibit A attached here too.
Now, this we were in scripture.
It's the exact same thing that was in your packet last time. Nothing changed. I just have...
I have a second reading of this exact same easement.
I am here for direction on whether you want, what you want done. I'm not here, I'm not here asking for...
That's what I want.
I'm, okay, somebody make a motion then.
Do we, we get an easement to the south side? Way that Randy recommended.
Okay.
I'll put that street, extend that street.
Wilderman or Bargher. Wilderman, I'm pretty sure. Wilderman runs to Columbia.
We'll draw it up as that, and we'll put a contract up.
No, I'll have Woodson do it. They have to pay for it.
I would agree to that. Uh, yeah, I made a motion with this. Is that a motion? Yeah. I'll say.
I'm not asking for approval of the ordinance until we get it figured out.
Yeah. So the purpose of the motion is to direct the city staff to write this up as a, um, easement on the south side. I would, uh, maybe we should also consider ending that policy there in case there's a reason or more to, if you have that, that gives us a small flexibility for the policy there, like we could change it from there.
I don't think it would, if that's legally fair.
Or even on the south side, but then sometime in the future, they won't change it.
If our attorney says that, that's it. We'll, we'll ask.
Okay, so, I guess the sense of council is, the sense of council, uh...
The only issue of whether it's legal or not, we can extinguish the easement any time we want. That's what we, we have that authority. We've extinguished easements all over this town since I've been on council. When I worked for the county, that's what I did for several years, was extinguish easements. You can do it as long as you're not denying somebody utility or somebody public access, then the governing authority has the authority to extinguish and make easements as far as putting it specifically in an easement that we can extinguish it any time we want to. The reality is, we can't either. If there ever came a time that we needed to do it, still provide them access in a different position and subdivide that land or develop it or however that needs to be done, easements can be extinguished. And then you can, uh, subdivide the land.
I understand that, that it, uh, it might be redundant if they're in there, but putting it in there must give us, uh, a little more guarantee, definitely that guarantee does. Anyway, uh, you understand that, that...
There's a motion on the floor, so...
What exactly is the motion there?
To move the easement to the south side like Randy suggested.
You know, I mean, my motion to put wording into the document that the city can remove the easement, change it, anytime in the future if we need to. So we, you'll think the area...
Narba did. They were told when they asked for the easement that they had to pay for everything.
So we'd have to go back to them and tell them to redo their...
Which is what I did after the last meeting, per the instructions of the council. Yes, I already went back to Narba. That's why they asked if there was a possibility to get this, um, clause written in there, provision.
That parcel surveyed already. You only purchased it from NBC and had a survey, didn't it? The mayor, you only purchased it from that. If so, then we just do 30 feet off of that property line.
So, any more, more comments? And, uh, we'll call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. New business, um, new business item A, housing investor help commission for grad night.
Vice Mayor, Council, my name is Robin Gonzalez. I'm here on behalf of the Class 2017 Grad Night Committee to ask for funding to go towards our annual Grad Night party that we have. Um, I'd like to answer any questions or anything you also have on grad night. As far as I can recall, we've been having grad night for at least 25 years now here in Holbrook. It's been very successful. I've been able to help and volunteer for the last 10 years, something that I feel is very important. You see these kids come in after graduation and they're just ready to take on the world, you know, that first night. It gives them a chance to be in a safe place with their friends and spend one more night together and keep them safe for that night. And the next night, I think they try to come down a little bit and realize, you know, they're ready to move on. And, um, any questions you have or anything, we're here to pretty funds. We've always got things from the city council before, so...
Council, if a major, $1,500 is budgeted in this item, and it's pretty close to $100,000. Need more discussion?
Anybody that would like to come down? We have been open all night long. We're going to have a cleanup committee this year to help clean up, and it's the youth and private group. They're going to come in and do all the cleanup afterwards. And it's been really fun through the years to see the community help. Jack in the police department helped us with the car wash the last couple of years, and Car Club donates, and, and the community's really supported the event, and I think it was a good cause, so, um, thank you.
I can have one comment. I'll make it two. The Car Club has given you $200, and I try to get three. And since I couldn't get the ball on three, I will give you that.
Thank you, Mr. Kestner. Thank you. It's funny, I'm so nervous up here. I could talk to interview all night long and talk your leg off, and you get up here and it's like...
I know it's a good cause, I've worked it.
Yes. Like I said, I'd look for any dude to come down for a few hours and just see the kids and it's really. One thing we've done different is we used to like pay close to three thousand dollars to get the big blow up things outside and we would pay for that. Last year, we purchased a cash cube where the money and things fly around inside of it. And we purchased the laser tag machine. And this year, we got a foosball table. We're trying to buy things so we can reuse them and we'll keep them for the next year. So, our one big expense is we do have a casino light. It was an outfit that comes from Flagstaff and they have a casino area that the kids can play with. And besides that, most of the money goes to purchase surprises and things for the kids, mostly seniors. But we do it, last year, we had close to three hundred kids. And we have like all the high school kids and if they'd like to bring a guest, they are allowed to bring a guest from some of the mountain town or anything like that, too.
So, where is it going to be going?
At the Hula School. Which means, and outside and hopefully there'll be good weather because most of our events are outside. So, we're going to do a lot of glow in the dark kickball, glow in the dark volleyball. We've got nice LED light type things for some of the things that we can do outside. There's a thing called Nine Square in the air. It's almost like a volleyball type game. It's a lot of variety that could be outside. Yes. Randy is going to bring us down a couple of disc balls from the park and we're going to set them up around the field. So, we ordered the lights to light up the disc ball and we ordered some of the glow in the dark disc. So, I can tell you, I'm outside. Weather permitting, and if not, we'll live it inside and I guess we'll.
If you haven't done it, it's a lot of fun. After you get past your bedtime.
Yeah, you get a.
You kind of wake up.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. Put in the session. All those are fair to the motion. You see, five more cities.
Aye.
Close.
Thank you very much.
New business item C, resolution seven fifty zero four, government affair housing policy.
He skipped B.
Nelson Cataracts here. Resolution seventy that's zero free, money in the fees for the Holbrook swimming pool.
Council, talking with John Verdery and Sharon, they feel like with the rates being free at the pool, that we had a lot of vandalism last year. And they felt that if we raised that fee from three back to a dollar, to make it simple, that there might be a little bit more, uh, control. Yeah, a little bit more control, I guess. Numbers, and Sharon would have the numbers for it, but we had a lot of kids last year. And the vandalism money mainly talking about is our showers. There's little stem valves in those showers and in the boys mainly. I think we have eight showers and all seven of the eight got broken last year just from kids hanging on them, kids over torquing them, that, that kind of stuff. And so, that causes a lot of damage and those stems are at least fifty bucks a piece. And so, that, little things like that just add up every year when we try to go and open that pool. And it's extremely hard to work with. So, this has been brought to you on the recognition of those two, and those, those two managers of the pool and take care of the numbers.
Another reason for the dollars, because as you know, the minimum wage went up to ten dollars. So, all the lifeguards are going to be paid ten dollars. I am, through Summer Rec, going to offer free family night. So, Monday nights, the plan is right now, Monday night will be free for families as long as the kids come with someone who is over seventeen years of age. So, there will be one free night. It's not going completely away. It just won't be free every day. On an average, when it's really hot and the wind's not blowing, we have a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and thirty-five kids in the pool, between the baby pool and the big pool a day. There's usually not swimming room, it's standing room.
We have a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty.
So, we have to have five guards at the pool at that, you know, for that.
Randy, you said that raising the rates.
I'm not saying it'll prevent it, I'm just saying it helps. They, they, John Verdery and Sharon felt that would help.
We never had the vandalism before we made it free. We never had the damage done at the pool until we made it free.
Is there, are there police reports on each time we get killed?
No, not really, because we don't know about it all the time until, you know, a couple days later, we can't make it, so.
The only police reports I've ever done have been for actual thefts of.
I mean, we can never catch somebody doing that. We've talked about this before, when we had vandalism of the golf course. I'd like to save the time and raise the little damage to innocent property there.
Do you recall what the, what we charged, what we last recharge, uh, emissions?
It was a dollar fifty, I believe.
Yeah, I, I think we lowered all of our, lowered all of our grades. So, I can't remember what it was before. Yeah, it is more, it was more than a dollar. So, the strike through is a little. Yeah, the only change would be to charge the zero to fifteen. Everything else is the same.
I know when I went to the swimming pool, we went to it one time this summer and Mayor Tyler invited me to go. And there were kids, like junior high age kids, an older jumping into the kiddie pool. There was a lifeguard there watching them. And lots of things going on like that. We didn't have anybody over the age of eighteen at the pool. And I did bring it up to the manager and that didn't go well. I was accused of intimidating the employees that go on there as the city councilman. But it does not change the fact that some good supervision would control all of this. If they would, all you have to do is kick three, three kids out and be serious about it. And I'll guarantee you, the vandalism would go down. This is a simple discipline situation. So, that was my one observation.
We do have a black, we do have a blacklist. You get warned and then the next time you're out for the season. And the list is posted on the wall. No, it depends on what they're doing, like if they're causing horseplay that may injure someone or they actually injure someone, that's one of the things. Pulling tiles off because they do that, they put, you know how the tiles are all gone from the gutters? Not, not obeying the, what the lifeguards are telling them to do. If we catch them in the bathrooms doing stuff because they flush things down the toilets that they're not supposed to. It's mostly bullying things that they. I'd have to bring, I don't know, I'd have to, you'd have to get Mariah in here to tell you.
Do, did John have somebody go on through the bathrooms that would be tired?
We go through, it's every, yeah, we take stand for fifteen. When we come off stand, the person on the tallest chair is supposed to go through both the bathrooms. So, every fifteen minutes. I know every time I come off stand, the showers are all on, nobody's in them. It's, the fifteen minute period is just ridiculous what goes on.
There's only one stand that the person.
No, there's two stands and then we sit on a chair in the corner. So, there's, there's three stands and then the baby pool has its own lifeguard.
Do we have a motion to approve the resolution seven fifty zero three, in a second? You have a motion in a second? All those are fair, please say aye.
Aye.
Close. Case. Now, we see, resolution seven fifty zero four, government affair housing policy.
Uh, Council, uh, this is the thing that we do every April, Thomas Peterson. We always find something in it and this is the one that I was talking about, uh, last week in March that we were talking about. This is required to give CPG funding and we'll do this here.
April is Fair Housing Month, that's why it's done every April. I found another type in there earlier. Okay.
Again, this is to, uh, quote law and of course, uh, of course, if we will, we're going to keep that law. Extremization of housing in homework and we want, and this requires us to take some positive action to help curtail that, that exists. Any special, only raising our CPG, um, to identify. There's no special, is there a motion?
I mean.
Motion to approve. Motion. All those appear?
Aye.
Close.
Got it.
I would need discussion of house question regarding the question of proposals results for executive improvement for the session, the city manager.
Council, Wade asked to put this on, I believe, last meeting to go over these proposals. Are there any packets?
We've never put together a committee to do the scoring for the qualifications. Don't know if you want to do that. Usually for requests, requests for qualifications, you score. But we did these proposals, but I don't think there's any dollar amounts in any of them. Just one of them?
I, I, I've been looking at some of this, I just, uh. Some of the dates are so old. I don't want to announce to you that, I don't know that some of the discussions that we've had that we were wanting to possibly look at, some of the process and discussions, what we're looking for, so, what we, what we wanted, that we, we seem to be, in a way, putting the cart ahead of us. And I, I would like to have a time when we can sit down and say, this is what we're actually looking for. We see these are maybe, uh, we went to a proposal for beds to find a consultant from, to find somebody, but I would like to also find out if we can get one that's going to be the one that wants to look at. I, there's certain items I'm looking for and, and I can, you can count these three choices. One's February dated and one's January second dated, and I, and I, one's thirty-first dated. I, I just don't know that I'm ready to, we've got really, if we're not, we've got to really think about what we're doing. I mean, it's, it's not that we're not going to go out and look, it's, it's, we need to look, but we also need to know what we're looking for, not just what's in the back.
Well, so, would you suggest that we, we say this, have a meeting, decide what we want? More closely, you want to pick one?
Yes. The way I can, I would advocate this, this item. But, but would you guys want to have a work session then? During that work session, talk about those kind of items?
If you got a problem with the whole discussion, we don't have the money. How can we go spend money when we don't have money? We don't have the money to do this. And we'll look like we're getting through more of a bind. And the last time I voted, we had a discussion here and I voted in a way that I didn't want to vote. Thinking I was voting for something else. So, I have a letter here, I'm going to turn to the chair, throw, throw Randy again, since I voted. Discuss what you want, as far as I'm concerned, we don't have the money to spend. We have a man here going to job.
We already voted out, we have a motion to adjourn table or?
There wasn't a motion.
I, I, good. I want to have a little discussion of this, uh, we didn't make a motion to adjourn table. But I, I looked at each one of these packets and, um, we're worried, and I think all of them, they'll assist us in that process and assist us in what do we really want to see in the city manager. They'll take each of our input and the community and city employee's input and see what they all want, that, that in the city manager. And then they compile that data, they come up to job descriptions, they look for merchant with, um, they label it that. And, uh, again, I looked at each one of these packets in detail and there's three of them that I think are, are one of the, our discussion, I don't, I think I'd like to include more associates because they, excuse me. They're so far removed from the Southwest area and North Bay company. But I'm looking at these other ones, um, I, I think they're good entities. And I'm especially impressed by the merchant of yours who are based out of Santa Fe, Mexico. Them being so close, you know, they, they might be less expensive. Plus, they gave a, um, a dollar amount of how much this would cost. And then they also gave an additional amount that if you went over that dollar amount, you would not exceed a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they just, they put them for money. So, if the person that we decide to hire, if they choose to leave or choose to fire them for whatever reason, the merchant will come back, you know, free of charge to be a workhorse. So, I, I, I don't mind tabling this, if somebody's going to tell me or a special session. I would really like each of us to go through these packets in depth and see what they say. It seems like some of the, um, some information that maybe has not been processed by all of us. And I'd like to do that, maybe, and all of us to be transparent at work session. Phil Jeffers moderated a meeting with council and had it accepted time. And he is trained in doing barter.
And he is trained in doing moderate, moderating meetings and he's good at it. And if these are reasonable, fit our budget. And that, I think it's what CJ is talking about. I don't know if anybody's asked Bill if he'd be interested in doing that, but he's done that with his tour. And if you've ever been in a moderate meeting, but that's what these guys are going to do, they'll charge a lot more for it. Maybe help us narrow down exactly what it is that we all have provisions up over, because that's really where we have to start out. At the nine thousand foot level, we come down to consensus and then we make a decision on, on that. And I think that would be worthwhile if you guys are interested.
What exactly do we want?
Our discussion for exactly what we want to be in a city manager and exactly what our vision is, all of our visions for the whole group. Because that's the issue here is, I get the impression that we're looking for a guy or gal comes in here with these great history, with all this great background, that knows lots of people. And they're going to roll in here, ba-ding, ba-doo, and pull out some companies they know or some execs or something like that. Bring in business and all that industry. And I don't know how realistic that that, that that really is. Particularly with the size of townyard and the pool of people that will be drawn around. So when it, I mean, that's the issue there. Is there a solution? Or, I mean, that's the goal, isn't that the number one thing?
I hear everybody talking about bringing business in and we have the best business in town right now. Alls we have to do is enhance it and that's tourism.
Tourism is a cut for us all.
That's a little bit also big.
More things like this now.
So I guess what I'm saying is, is that in, in, and then only just finding out with my third budget. And what I see is, I would, I don't have a follow up finding fifteen thousand stuff, but that's not the question right now. To me, to find somebody that's going to do the visionary stuff that we're looking for. I do believe that there is a pull out there. I think that by saying that, you know, it's all well and good to say we kind of have, we don't need, we don't have. I think there is a pull out there, I think COVID does draw people, I've seen people come to COVID. I look back here, if there's four of us, they'll come here. The only, I, this, this council has always been able to find money. We can, we can joke, we can laugh, but every time we've got a budget, we pass it one day and things have changed at different times. We found this or we came up with this and we saved here, we saved there. I'm not concerned about the budget right now, as far as that fifteen thousand. I think, I, I looked over different places and I can, I can find that pretty closely, pretty quickly with the money. But that's not the question. Question is, before I actually hire someone, I won't be able to have kind of a, a few of them go along. We're going to, you know, I'll do this, so the merchant, I'll finish, and I finish doing them. The other thing is about moderator, I think that normally I would have said the moderator would, that. Yeah, good and absolutely a great idea, I think, a great deal of Bill Jeffrey. But I think he's already biased, I don't know that we could get past that, everybody might be saying backtrack. I don't want to lose sight of what we're looking for. But I'm looking for somebody that's going to be coming out of this city manager. That the whole council can be one, not just you. Some of the cities move forward, I think, I would therefore make a motion that we table this item and tell them the next, reschedule it and tell them next. We, when there's a call.
I second that, I also have comments. It might cost us fifteen or twenty or twenty-five or thirty thousand dollars to find the right city manager. Not finding this right city manager could cost us a whole lot more than that. Furthermore, we can, the city manager, he is, one of the things that they do is find the grants. And they actually find enough grants throughout the year to pay for their salaries. Not paying specifically for their salary, but items, materials, positions or whatever. And Mr. Sullivan is very good funding, money here and there in the budget. Those issues, just don't spend money. Find the best person that we can to serve the public. As I said last time, I was on point, whether Mr. Hester agrees with that or not. Tourism is not going to get us by much longer. And we need to play industry and, and let industry have a job, but help public survive.
Fortunately, I work in a lot of tourist hours, I've been a lot of tourist. That's why I said we have the best in the world.
We got a motion in second to, to tell the next meeting. I can ask question on this. Have a moderator, somebody, I think that might be a way to get, ask me, ask him, I think.
You work session, yes, I'd like to, 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 to moderate.
That particular one, but what about, you're going to have to have somebody to lead the discussion.
Yeah, we need a moderator.
I have no problem with Bill Jeffers.
But it doesn't necessarily need to be Bill, but I think you need someone to lead the discussion.
Probably, probably do it. Pretty sharp dude, he probably knows people that can moderate what he can get here. I'll guarantee you, ask Randy, we talked, called the leader, the moderator, there's.
Yeah.
Called a college, they're going to have moderators. All the moderator does is come in and helps us as we come up with ideas, we'll have big themes. And you have big themes and they drive you down to a point and we come up with consensus. And that's the issue that we have here as a council, isn't it?
I can say the two from nine thousand feet has had reality, yes. The reason I'm asking is because if we just do it next meeting, we're in the same situation. It doesn't allow the same, like, to discussion, maybe, uh.
You really need someone to lead it, because it's not fair to ask Randy to lead it as the interim manager when. Yeah, you need someone to help you guys. And I will be more than happy to call all of those and ask.
We call APS.
Okay.
So the specific purpose yet for that meeting, the, what is our specific purpose for the meeting?
The specific purpose is to get us as a council on board with what our direction is as a governing body. We set the direction. When we ask for a budget, say, hey, this is kind of what we want, the direction we want to go in. We have a lot of authority here. And so, but one thing I notice with this council in particular, we're spoiling. But I don't know that we're really all that far off. We just don't ever have that opportunity as a group to sit down with the moderator and for us to talk about all these things and get them all out in the open. And come to a consensus.
So when you say consensus at the end of that meeting, what are we hoping to have accomplished? A job description?
There won't be a job description that these guys do, is a job description. But it will help us inform our people when they come, be like, hey, we just had a moderated discussion. This is the direction of the council in regard to economic development, cleaning up the town, all those things, all the stuff. And it'll be listed, we'll have it dealt with, the moderator gets done, they'll go through the whole issue, say, if you guys agree on this, we'll have consensus on it. They'll pipe it all up and we'll look at it and we'll like it or don't like it, that's the whole point. It's for us getting to.
So strategic plan.
A strategic plan, essentially. And then we'll say, this is where we're at as a council, we agree on this. And we hand it to them and then when you hire a friend like this, you say, this is what we agree on, this is what we're having. And you hand it to them and that's huge for when you go searching for an employee of this nature.
So when you guys want to set a work session for this?
We want to set, we have a motion in the fourth, in second. Motion is to, to tell the next council, let's put a motion. Okay, all those here, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Let's leave the three, split to the three.
Yeah, a tie is a thing.
I'd like to make a motion that we get as the moderator and he can come back when we're ready. I'll also do that. Do we have a special session with the moderator to prepare to?
Base it off, see what they're available and then ask you guys if you're available on that same day, okay.
So as far as date, what, just because that's kind of not even scheduled, we want to do it as, what session, or?
It may be a Thursday night, who knows, it's.
Yeah, we want that totally separate. I would suggest to do it something to, maybe on Saturday.
That would be, those ones are good usually, them Saturday ones. We've done strategic planning on Saturday before.
We'll need like four, three or four hours. So if you jump time, have film in the morning, do it in the morning or?
Sugar. Lots of sugar. To get, yes, there was, to get a moderator and come back at a later time when they're ready.
I had a little bit of discussion on what areas we're looking at for the moderator. So that's, that's, we want to make a, I'd like to see somebody. Well, I think if we got a lady that from the economic development, maybe she might be able to, Janet Bean might be able to help as well.
I'll ask her. Wade already told me APS.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah. The moderator, if they're good, should come up with a list of things beforehand for you guys to, not a survey really, but a couple of questions maybe. So that they kind of have an idea where they're going. So I, I see that forthcoming after I find someone.
And I think the legal will be a good first.
Motion is to have a moderated special session at some point in the future. All those here, say aye. Ouch. Okay. The agenda is a sacred session, there is none. We have item twelve, claims payment approved for all. In the matter, eight hundred and ten dollars, it's seventeen cents, no motion.
Make a motion if they, hold on here, here, ten dollars, seventeen cents.
All favor?
Aye.
Close? And we have item fifteen, thanks to you, over, to the amount of six hundred and three dollars and forty seven cents.
So make a motion if they, if you're, six hundred and three dollars, forty seven cents.
I have a motion for the second discussion. But all those here, say aye.
Aye.
Close? And item fourteen, all to the others, for items filed in the agenda.
I'm sorry, I don't have any.
No, nothing there, so without objection, we will end this meeting and return back into.